Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2024. I ask that you, I mean Tuesday. I ask that you please silence your cellphones and all your electronic devices. And also, I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming, but also welcome our special guests that are visiting from out of state. So we welcome you here this evening to the Gochay City Council meeting. The prayer will be by Reverend, Mr. Reverend Blanks, and the pledge will be by Councilman Anderson. Please stand.
Father God, we thank you with all our heart, thank you for God, for coming before your fall grace and mercy, thank you for just being God, how God has come so happy, come this time here as councilmen, we have your guidance, we have your fire, as you can lead down the male, we have the fire in the country, if you can lead this city, we move forward, we have a fire, and we bring the city to what it should be, we have a fire, we truly thank you, and everyone who gets something for concern about the city, say that Gochay, we continue to keep us happy, we continue to move forward, Jesus, we pray and ask, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson, and thank you, Reverend Blanks. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Jancy?
Yes, sir, but I did want to call on your attention to you have a corrected agenda, items fifteen to sixteen, we'll be moved. You have items one through fifteen now, and then you have revised pictures and completion for consent into item number fifteen, because they are deskable reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Jancy. Do we have any other changes? Do we have a motion by council to approve that order of the agenda order with the changes and additions by Ms. Jancy?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Galot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Jancy.
City of Gochay's Earth Day Celebration will be Friday, April 19th, starting at 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. at Shepherd State Parks Wellness Center, and Tasty Thursday will be April 25th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the dorms in your model.
Thank you, Ms. Jancy. And that brings us, is anybody here to receive the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation? Nobody's here to receive it, so I'll just read it. A proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, whereas City of Gochay prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas Casa of Southeast Mississippi is in association with the National Court Appointed Special Advocate Association, speaks for the best interest of abused and neglected children who are involved in the juvenile courts, and whereas more than thirty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-four reports of maltreatment throughout the state of Mississippi are reported to suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year, and whereas of those roughly six thousand five hundred and twenty-nine were substantiated investigations, meaning at least one form of abuse or neglect was found, and whereas in Jackson County there were about two hundred and seventy-three or more substantiated incidents of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation, and whereas within our state eighty-one children died, according to the most recent federal numbers reported of abuse and neglect, and whereas through a national effort, City of Gochay community members are encouraged to join together to raise awareness for those children that have fallen victim to abuse and neglect through the month of April, and whereas this effort will give abused and neglected children in our community and around the country a chance for a safe and positive future. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Gochay, Mississippi, by virtue and authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 24th as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and the city and in doing so, our job citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness and help prevent child abuse and neglect, and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Gochay, Mississippi, to be affixed on this the second day of April 2024, Mayor Casey Vaughn. That brings us to business agenda item number one. Summary authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Wright, Ward, Hatton, and Gould to audit the financial statements of the City of Gochay for the year ended September 30th, 2023. The fee estimated for these services is thirty-five thousand dollars. By our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
This is required by the state statute, and this is, they have been our auditors since 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to approve the professional services agreement with Wright, Ward, Hatton, and Gould to audit the financial statements of the City of Gochay for the year ended September the 30th, 2023? The fee estimated for these services is thirty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman George, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Galot?
Since 2016, is what you said, Teresa?
For first year, they audit it us. It would have been done in 2017, but they started our audit since 2016.
Sounds like they're doing a real good job. Proud of them, proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Galot. Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No.
I just want to thank the city manager, the clerk, Ms. Montgomery, and the deputy clerks, and all the ones who work in finance that have to deal with the auditors when they're doing the audit hand in hand, and we appreciate all y'all do, and we do always have a clear audit, so we appreciate that. We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Authorization to acquire an easement along the bond or property by our city attorney, Mr. Dennis.
Yes, Mayor, this is, I believe, for our utility project that goes across that property. The citizen's property has been appraised, or the easement has been appraised, we're requesting authority from the council to acquire that easement.
Okay. Any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to authorization to acquire an easement along bond or property?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussions, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
This is a total amount, thirty-nine, thirty-nine, seven, seven hundred and seventy-three, that's the total in that group.
No, sir, that, that is...
Eighteen thousand nine sixty-five. Okay. All right, no comment. Councilman Galot?
I was looking through it, I must have missed it. Where's the address that says?
The dentist, the whole, what used to be the dentist office, right in front of the entrance to the mall property.
Is this what he brought up last week about, did want to expand?
No, this is for our waters who are...
We're running water and sewer, we have a water and sewer project, run water and sewer from our mall property, through ARPA, and so we have to have this easement in order to run that water and sewer, so we're basically buying...
Okay, in front of that dentist office.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I don't understand. Thank you.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, approval of the doctative claims. They've already been presented by the city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, and they've been posted online for the general public and the council. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion from council to approve the doctative claims?
I make a motion, we approve the doctative claims via that all entries are on a true, correct, properly entered and not fraudulent.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galot. Any discussions, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Galot, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. We approve all of them in one motion unless any of the council wants to pull one. Does anybody want to pull a consent item? It's consent one through fifteen. Approval of minutes from recess council meeting held March the 19th, 2024. Number two, annual renewal of the contract with Seating River Services for the Life Care Plus program. Three, approval for Gochay Police Department to use official uniforms, weapons, and vehicles for off-duty security employment at the Sound Amphitheater. Four, approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Wireless Communication Commission for the Mississippi Inoperable Channel Plan, MICP. Five, approval of the memorandum of understanding for permanent use between the Mississippi Wireless Communication Commission and the Gochay Police Department. Six, approval to allow Seymour Engineering to act as authorized agent on behalf of the city related to the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources permitting process for the Fairway Boat Launch and Pier Project. Seven, authorization to submit a grant application to the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security on behalf of the Gochay Police Department and Gochay Fire Department. Eight, acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion for the Town Commons Park Phase Two Amphitheater Project. Nine, approval of a non-exclusive use agreement with P-360 Performance Sports for Gochay's youth baseball and softball fields, including adjacent facilities at Buddy Davis Park. Ten, request to waive rental fees at Baker Park Basketball Pavilion for South Mississippi Housing Authority for its community skill-building outreach initiative. Eleven, approval of the contract amendment for the disaster debris removal services to extend the contract to December 31st, 2025. Twelve, approval of the contract amendment for the disaster debris monitoring services to extend the contract to December 31st, 2025. Thirteen, approval of the contract amendment for the disaster response services and supplies to extend the contract to December 31st, 2025. Fourteen, approval of water and sewer adjustments of March 2024 in the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Fifteen, acceptance of certificate of complete substantial completion for the Town Commons Park Phase Two B Great Line Project Sidewalk, Sidework, Project Sidework and Utilities Project. Do we have a motion to approve one through fifteen?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. First is discuss citizen comments. Everybody comes to the podium, states your first, last name, and your address. You have three minutes. Councilman College is the timekeeper for the ones who haven't been here, and when it gets to one minute, he will hold up, thanks to Shanda Addie-Bang and our planning department, and Sam Keen, they made us a fancy new number one. So when this number one's held up, you got one minute remaining. When your one minute's up, if you're not done, I will ask you to please sit down, your time is up. Did everybody get to sign in? I wanted to speak there in citizen comments. First up is Ms. Delamore.
Delamore, 2020, Westgate Park. It's been a year since I've been coming here talking about Russel Anderson allegedly made some racial comments about Black Spring riots. So it is against the law to hack into someone's computer, he said his computer was hacked. So if it was, then why has he not filed a police report? It's against the law to do so, but he's never filed a police report. And so I just want to ask you all to ask him once more, file a police report that will prove that maybe someone actually hacked his computer, because if someone does something to me, Gochay Police Department will take good care of us with the file report, and things will happen. So why has he not done that, Mayor? I ask you, over and over, and it's been about a year, he talked, allegedly talked about the Black Spring riots, so he said his computer was hacked, saying he did not do that. So file a police report, and see if we can get something done for you, and you may even be compensated for someone hacking to your computer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Charles Moore?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We still, we still asking Anderson...
David Anderson. Your name and address.
Charles Moore, 2020, Gochay, Mississippi. Okay, we still asking Anderson to resign because of his comment. He's supposed to get with Vice President Jackson, end up in the WCP with him, and talk about what he gonna do, and this and that, but he had another guy with, why haven't you got with him, Russel Anderson? He waiting on you, look at him, look at him, he smiling right now, waiting on you to come up and give that comment. All right, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Billy Booth?
Billy Booth, 4005, Gilchrist Street. Good evening. First, I want to retro speak, I shouldn't mention it last, but I'm appreciative to the mayor and the manager for having the state of the city address. That was something I don't think I, I've never seen it, but I'm really appreciative of that. It was really good to see that update, and I hope you do that every year. But I do stand to report that Councilman Anderson has yet to adequately address the racial Facebook posts found and paid attributed to him. We have asked him over and over to address this, he has promised over and over that he was going to do this or that, but has never fulfilled any of his promises. He has constantly ducked, dodged, denied, and deceived. He and his attorney said that his Facebook page was hacked. He said that the Facebook sent him a whole stack of his files, however, he has yet to show this proof. He also hasn't filed a police report to try to find out who this hacker was, so it caused us to question, was his page truly hacked? I stand again also asking this council, the city manager and city attorney, to figure out what can be done about this situation, as we have, and as well as what can be done to try to prevent this from happening again with the city official or city staff. For since the post was initially seen, there has been twenty-three council meetings, and Councilman Anderson has only physically attended fifty-six percent of those meetings. For various reasons, he has not been here present. As a matter of fact, this year, he has only made two out of seven meetings this year. But yet, our tax dollars continue to pay his full salary. Is this right, or is this fair? I stand again to say that there needs to be some guidelines as to the conduct of the city officials and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Ms. Sheila Coleman?
Good evening. Sheila Coleman, 2712, Calhoun, Montana. Once at the Franger Family Fun Day, the former mayor walked up and started talking to my son, who was in high school at the time and played football. He was joined in the middle of that conversation by the lady that was on the city council at the time. I was more than a little perturbed with both of them, because I didn't appreciate them approaching my child, and didn't like what they had to say. The mayor pointed out to him that he recognized him for playing football, because he always had his shirt untucked, that's all he said. The city councilwoman took it a little further and began to berate my son. This gray-haired old woman, and I can say that, was criticizing my son for running up and down the football field as a defense lineman and tackled with his shirt untucked. I wanted to tell her, take your old behind off there and tackle people and see how long their uniforms pristine, but I let him handle it, as he was old enough, articulate enough, and intelligent enough to speak for himself, and he did. The next day, the mayor came to the school and issued him an apology. Now, she did say one thing that stuck with me. She told him, when you are on the football field, playing for Gochay, you are representing the entire city. When I was a child, a long, long time ago, we didn't tell the truth, it was purely telling a story. As I got a little older, it was a fear, and older still, it became a lie. I don't take calling someone a liar lightly, but grown people tell lies, they don't tell stories, and they don't fear, they lie. Now, Mr. Anderson, last year you said you would bring irrefutable proof that you didn't post the racist words on your Facebook page. We waited, and you never came forward with irrefutable proof, so that was a lie. If I'm correct, you told Reverend Booth you would supply him with proof since last year, and you never did, so that was another lie. You told Vice President Jackson that you would meet with him with irrefutable proof that you did not post a racist Facebook post wishing black people dead, and again, you never came forward, never tried to meet, and never gave proof. That was another lie. If it walks like a duck, quacks like, cracks like a duck, it's a duck. Now, back to the beginning, when you sit on the city council of Gochay, Mississippi, you are representing the entire city and its citizens. You do not wish death on any of them, and you don't continue to lie. To the people looking for a city to live in, do business in, vacation in, having a liar and alleged racist as a city councilman is not a good look for the city you profess to love. It is time and past time for you to step down.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr., I don't know. Mr. Goldberg's not in here, is it? Oh, I didn't see him. Okay, Mr. Wayne Goldberg, you're up closer than normal. I'm used to you sitting back there.
Got a little closer this time. Pastor Wayne C. Goldner, 5006 Deerfield Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, Ward 4. I have missed quite a few of these meetings, but I have been watching them on Facebook. And I do pass by City Hall quite often, and I notice that there's a very immaculate lawn, but there's this one weed out there, and no matter how many times I go by, that one weed always catches my eye. It doesn't matter how good the lawn is, boy, I mean, no matter how good the lawn looks, there's still that one weed rusting. I don't like to point fingers, but the lawn, council boy, I mean, the lawn will always not look so great, as long as you got that one wild weed out there. No matter what you do, you're gonna see that weed. And I have people come to me, I'm a small business owner, I'm off in Ocean Springs or the Iberdale, and they say, what are you asking about that weed? Why is that weed still in the front lawn? Out there where everybody can see. I, I understand that you do a little bit of weed feed out there, whatever, but it didn't do any good. You know, those little poster boards, you know, that little stuff that we thought was gonna snuff out the weed? The corona storms and stuff that might make the weed fall down a little bit and maybe miss a few council meetings, but when the sun comes back up, that weed is still there. Weed of people in Gochay, oh, just like you all are probably so sick of hearing about this weed, we would just love something to be done about. I mean, show us something, because that weed hasn't shown us anything but that it's weed, and it's making the lawn look bad. Nobody is proving to me that it's not a weed. You want to tell me that it's just like the rest of the lawn? But it's not as green as the rest of the lawn. It's just a weed, Rusty. It's just a weed. So what we're asking, once again, is what we can do about that weed, because all the amphitheaters aren't gonna change that weed. No, no, all the Tasty Thursdays don't change that weed. Bad Cop Park doesn't change that weed. People still want to know why...
Mr. Goldberg, your time's up.
Still in the front lawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Olson? And the...
Good evening, Mark Olson, 2504, Robert Hyrum Drive. Here to address the concerns of myself and some of my neighbors about the destruction of a protected tree on Robert Hyrum Drive. The UDO poses a great detail about what is a protected tree, and how you can remove that protected tree, and having vegetation in general. Well, it started out to be a tree trimming, turned into a tree removal. So firmly believing that the UDO was passed to fairly and openly addressed issues of growth and change in the city, I asked the two people responsible why it was removed. I had not received an answer from either one of them. In talking to various other elected and Gochay employees, the reasons bounced all over the place, from it was a safety hazard, it impeded the driveway, it interfered with the cable and TV line, it was an insurance issue because the roots were going under the driveway or under the house, and I still don't have an answer as to why it was done. Is it a big secret? It builds doubt, and you don't get a clear answer to, but it should be an open question. And this affected a lot of people, I mean, most of us moved down there because of the tranquility of the neighborhood, it was all heavily treed, and now it seems that new people, and in this case, a house flipper comes in and changes the character of the neighborhood. And I would hope that we would consider, you guys would consider changing the right to remove protected trees. It was far more stringent before the UDO was adopted, and now it can just be passed by the planning director and one city councilman with little regard to people that have lived there for a long time, and pay taxes there for a long time, for people who knew to the neighborhood. Thank you.
And Mr. Olson, I will, the answer, the tree ordinance, how the operation works is, it was changed to be more user-friendly, because it was not user-friendly to the residents. So they changed it so it wouldn't hinder people losing their insurance, and also the other thing, so it wouldn't prevent people delayed in building or development. So that was the two issues when we changed it. It used to have to go through a long process and come before the council, but when you got insurance companies writing letters that if you don't get a tree removed in a certain timeframe, and the board meeting's not before then, then you run into a little bit of hiccup. So we had to adjust the ordinance to accommodate those type of issues, that's why it was changed, to answer that question. The second, how it works, is they fill out an application at the planning department, Mr. Ankersen's department, planning department, his staff goes and does a report, and they email it to the councilman of that ward. The councilman of that ward reviews the documents that are provided, goes to the tree also and look at it, if not, looks at the photos that are provided and makes a decision. If the resident does not like the decision, because some have been turned down, then they can appeal it to the whole board, the whole city council, for approval or denial. So that's the current... So that's the current protocol for removing a protected tree, which we only have two in the city of Goche, and it's the Magnolia, Southern Magnolia and the Lavo. So we'll get your councilman to get with you after the meeting and give you the update because he approves the request.
I'd like to do it now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Golat.
What happens is, is you get an email from a code enforcement officer, and he gives you photos, okay? You review those photos, and then, in my case, I would go to the location and look at every one of them. I do not just approve it based upon an email. Based upon the email of what he provided, it says, root system is growing towards a house and the tree limbs are growing into power lines. Where the tree is located, it blocks your view down the street for any traffic. If they trim the tree, there won't be anything left because of the way the branches are growing. Based upon that, and my ride by and look at it and stop, I made the decision that the thing should be removed because I felt like it was a hazard to traffic and it was being mangled by power lines. And that's why I made the decision, approved or remove a little tree.
Thank you, Councilman Golat. That brings us to council comments. It's the first meeting of the month, so we will have Councilman George.
I have no comments tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your support for the city, and, you know, and it's a blessing that we speak out, be able to speak out and speak our opinion about what we believe is the right thing for the city of Goche. As of that, I have no other, no other comments.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Golat?
I want to thank everybody for coming. It was a good crowd here tonight. I wish more people would come. I know a lot of people watch it today on Facebook. I will go home and look at Facebook to see how many people actually viewed the city council meeting. It runs anywhere between six hundred and a thousand every week, which absolutely amazes me. But people sometimes want to be heard, and they come to the meetings, and I want to thank every one of y'all for coming and being heard and voice your opinion on what this city council does. It's a tough job sometimes sitting up here, but we do it.
Thank you, Councilman Golat. Councilman College?
Well, being that we don't have another council meeting before our major opening, I hope everybody here and in Facebook world have got their tickets for Casey and Sunshine Man a week from Friday. I'm excited, 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 and I'm ready for this thing to go off and bring this city into national spotlight. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes. I missed several meetings, good many meetings, and it was due to a couple of surgeries I had, and one of the surgeries was, they were minor surgeries, but one of them was not too minor for me, is it prevented me from venturing away from home very much, and I'm not going to go into it. I don't think you want to hear those details. But I attended those meetings that I was home on the phone. I was here. I was at the meeting on the phone, just like other members of this council that misses a meeting, sometimes attend them on the phone. And I'm not a liar. You can call me a liar all you want, call me a weed. I'm neither one of those. I'm a good man. I go to church. I'm a Christian. I'm not going to call anybody else any names. I mean, that's for sure. Do unto others, you'd have them do unto you. I don't see anything celebratory about the alleged comment that was a year ago. I'm not going to celebrate it. I'm not going to comment on it. It's a year ago, and I have no further comment on that. Thank you all for coming and have a good evening.
Councilman Elvin?
Just like to acknowledge the hard work of the city employees and White Pro, H two O, H two O innovations, for all the hard work you do each and every day. It is noticed what you do, and we couldn't operate the city without your services. Just want to thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. I just want to thank you, Mr. Booth, for recognizing the state of the city, and thank you for appreciating that hard work. And I just want to thank our city manager and her staff, Kim Soshe, and Sam King did a fine job putting all the information together to be able to present that information to the citizens, and it is very much appreciated and it's very informative. So if you did not watch it, I ask that you go watch it, but like Reverend Booth, let's give all the staff a round of applause for them. This, the past couple of weeks has been busy. I was honored to go with our city manager and Councilman Sam, and the Mississippi songwriters and Resurrection Catholic School choir, Ted Jackson, to meet with the legislature delegation to continue to get money for the city of Goche. And I just want to thank the Mississippi songwriters, our city manager for organizing that, and our youth that enjoyed going there and also singing at the Capitol that day. Also, hope everybody had a happy Easter. It was a great Easter in the city of Goche. The weather was beautiful, but I can tell you that we had people working, and I want to thank H two O and Ramona. I know y'all were out there, and of course, our public safety was working, and our health care providers. But thank all of you, but also thank the American Legion in Goche. We had a veteran that had a water leak, and the American Legion stepped up. Councilman Golat's son volunteered and stepped up. It was in his neighborhood, and the woman's bill was just astronomical, and they really went in there and got her water repaired, and she's been without water for a while now. So I want to just thank you, Councilman Golat, Ramona, you for working with them, H two O, the fire department, and the American Legion, and the plumber from the American Legion for helping the veteran get her water back on. That was much appreciated. Also, I want to thank the city staff. We got a lot of kudos at Shepherd State Park. Myself and Councilman College attended the mountain bike race tournament. We had over a hundred students participating throughout the state of Mississippi, and one city in Louisiana participated. So we had a great day out at Shepherd for that event, and everybody was just boasting how much they love Shepherd State Park, and they hope to come back next year. So I want to thank the volunteers that worked on the trails, but also thank the city staff and thank our mountain bike club here in Goche for their hard work, and they won some awards. So kudos to them. Also, I want to thank Philip and Councilman Jackson. I don't remember Philip's last name off the top of my head.
Thomas.
Thomas. Him and his brothers, they did a great job organizing a basketball.
Three-on-three.
Three-on-three at Baker Park this last Saturday, and it was just great to see all of the youth utilizing Baker Park because it is much needed down there for those youth. Also, I want to thank the city staff for getting the splash pad repaired so we could get it on for all those little darlings, so now they can go splash away at Baker and City Park and have a great summer here. I hope y'all have a great week. As Councilman College said, don't forget to go to enjoythesound.com and purchase your tickets for all of our events at the amphitheater. Ms. Jackson? Ms. Montgomery? Mr. Danos?
Yes, Mayor, I requested going to closed session to determine if we need for executive.
All right.
All right, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session and determine whether we need to go into executive session.
A motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Golat to go into closed session to see if we need to go into executive session. All in favor? Motion carries. So that means everybody has to step out of the room until we decide what we're doing, and Mr. Danos will come in and let you know.